Okay. Oh, you said it. So we don't have to say it, George. Okay, this session is being recorded and we're live on Facebook? Okay?
I guess.
Okay, go ahead, David. Fudge?
Oh, yeah, that's all rise to the fudge allegiance.
I guess I have to go too, right? Uh-oh, there you go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation under God.
Okay.
So we gotta get synchronized on that.
You don't have a producer.
Get real close. Real close, Chuck Lewis.
Well, yeah, here.
Uh, Charles Fisher.
Here.
James Renner.
Here.
Pam Andrin.
At the lunch.
At the breakfast.
Here.
Uh, myself, Mark Kelly.
All right, um, I'm gonna ask for, uh, the approval of, uh, minutes in the last session. Anybody wanna? Second?
My second.
Okey dokey. Our, um, next item on the agenda is a solicitor for planning.
All in favor, Pam?
Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Bye.
For the minute. Bye.
Bye.
Okay? Okay, the next agenda item is... Any what? Yeah? Um... The next agenda item is the, uh, solicitor for planning. Uh, the Board of Commissioners suggested that we have a solicitor for the planning commission. They need to give a reason as to why, um, they're gonna vote tonight, right after our meeting. Um, uh, we are assured that they are, the, uh, funding in place or will have it in place by that time that whoever the solicitor's gonna be is there. Um, does anybody have any questions? Or opinions on the matter?
Well, I have an opinion. Um... Although, um, we don't frequently have, uh, need for, um, a solicitor's advice, um, I, I can recall at least twice a year, um, when it would have been nice to, to, um, you know, maybe, um, have a, a session with him, a sidebar session wi- with a, uh, solicitor, um, on a particular subject. So, um, I'd say I'm in favor of it.
I am also.
Yeah, I could, I could provide a little context as well if you'd like, Pam.
Okay.
So you're, we're seeing more and more, uh, planning commissions that have a solicitor sitting at the table with them. It's becoming more of a common practice. Uh, the solicitors typically review the plans on the back end as they come through. They review the documents that come through. So giving them, being, having that extra ocean as that legal background at the table with you as, uh, you know, you're making your recommendation, they'd be able to assist if there is a legal question that comes up or seeking control bunch on, uh, you know, on, on the, the, the opinion you wanna give. Um, the other thing is too, like, uh, like Jimmy kinda said, it doesn't happen very commonly, um, with the smaller applications, but with larger corporations coming in, they do typically bring in their lawyer to do some of the present, uh, presentations. So having someone there that can find, that kind of has already been interacting with that lawyer on the back end since the application may be able to assist further.
Okay, 'cause I've only ever had two questions and all that for a lawyer and the whole time I've been on the board and that was, both of them were done in the last two, three years.
Yeah, and then, um, and then from there, when the, the, you know, the solicitor sits at the table with the Board of Commissioners and at that point provides legal advice on, you know, the resolution that needs to be adopted. I think that this will provide a little bit continuity of the, of what's coming from the planning commission to the board and how to force the approval or denial, whatever, at that point.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Well, uh, you know, I know there's been a couple times when some legal questions have come up and we sat there trying to figure out how we should formulate the question to the attorney. With the attorney in the room, you know, it, it'll make that process a little easier. And in addition, I guess the biggest thing that'll add is the attorney is gonna know the context of which that item or matter that we're asking question about, what the background is and how it came about and what the discussion was about. And even though, even though we're, we might write what our recommendations are, that attorney being there is gonna know the foundation of how we arrived at what our, what our recommendation is. So it's gonna facilitate the entire process. Uh, and I think that's gonna happen even in cases where we don't have questions, but we did try to resolve something or propose something. Then the attorney's gonna have the context that, that that was proposed and can advocate or explain further to the board without the need to come back to us for further explanation. So I think that, that's beneficial.
Okay.
The other thing in the long run is if we do have a, a legal question that comes up, if you think about it, we, we could possibly take some action that particular evening, but we have to put it off because we have to wait for the legal advice before we can consider whether we should go forward with it or not. With the attorney there, I, I think it might be situations where we can, uh, acquire that advice and then proceed accordingly without wasting time for the, uh, for the advocate, for the developer, for the, for the builder, for the, for the resident, whoever might be before us.
Is there any negatives to having that person in place?
The cost?
Say that, say that a little louder.
Well, say the cost.
Yeah, I think, um, so from our perspective, uh, we believe that there'll actually be some cost savings on the back end 'cause the solicitor is already reviewing that plan prior to the planning board meeting and then reviewing the planning board meeting minutes and what goes on there before that recommendation comes through. So should be able to, you should offset a lot of the current cost.
Well, isn't that additional for his service to be in place at that time?
Yeah, so we, so this, uh, solicitor, so the league, before a board adopts any of the, uh, resolutions approving any of these plans, they, they do a thorough legal review. And typically what's happening is after, after there's a recommendation from the planning board, that solicitor's reviewing the planning board minutes, so he's, he's paid to review those minutes as well as any questions, comments, or concerns that come up through that review, all the reviews. So it'll be like an offset. It'll be less time spent on the review after the planning commission because they'll have firsthand knowledge of what's going on and being there. A lot of times there's back and forth between the, um, the, and both of the lawyers, the developer's lawyer and the township's lawyer as well. So if that can be done at the planning commission, that can eliminate some of that cost.
Well, as opposed, as opposed to making it a, a permanent thing, how about, uh, doing it for just a period of time, uh, to see whether, um, there, there is an offset to the cost or whether it ends up being, uh, you know, excessive.
Are you saying trial basis? Is that what you're asking or not? I'm trying to...
Yeah, keep, keep, uh, have the solicitor there, uh, in place for a period of time and see if there is a cost saving or if, uh, the, there is a cost benefit or not.
Okay. The only other note, the only other note I would provide is that, um, when these developers come in, they sign an agreement to pay for the township's legal and engineering fees associated with their application. So these are not direct costs going back to the back end. These are costs that are passed on to the developer for essentially the review of them being able to put in a building and then produce income for themselves in the future.
Oh, as long, well, as long as the residents are not incurring, uh, any expenses for the solicitor being there, okay.
Well, I think, I think it certainly would be nice, uh, Pam or, or at the suggestion of, of one of us could call us into, uh, a five, five-minute, uh, executive session in the other room or something if we, we needed some advice. And, uh, and like George says, we could, we could, uh, you know, resolve the issue right then and there and move on.
And plus the fact that if I have a question, I, for the lawyer, I might have to sit there and write it down, but at least he'll get my meaning and exactly what I say instead of having a paraphrase sent to him. Because that was the problem I had, I still didn't get a really good answer. But, um, it wa- it wasn't the exact wording I had said to the commissioner that sent it. It was, the wording was different, so I don't think that Mike really got it. But he did give me kind of an... So he...
It sounds like there's more reason to have, uh, a, a solicitor there then.
Yeah, I think so.
Would we have any input into who the solicitor would be?
I was, I was at the meeting last week when they discussed that. Uh, not there personally, but I was, I was observing the meeting and everything. And, uh, there was a discussion about can the planning commission have quote-unquote their own solicitor other than the township solicitor? And that's something the board has to deal with because in effect, the way, the way that Mike Pierce explained it was that let's assume that we had, uh, Charlie Jones as our solicitor. Charlie Jones would give us advice, we'd act accordingly with that advice. Mike says at that point he'd have to re-review that advice and it would probably at that point be an additional charge to the, uh, to the township. The, the other part that was, that needs to clarify is unlike zoning, in the zoning board, they need a separate solicitor because there are times when zoning, the position of the zoning board is adverse to the wishes of the township. So that, that they can't have the same solicitor because it would be a conflict of interest. With respect to our, our board, we are an extension of the Board of Commissioners by, 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 uh, uh, I don't know, Grace or something like that, but the bottom line is we make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. So theoretically, their solicitor, our solicitor, we had a separate one, should be on the same page, not opposed to each other. And the bottom line is can we have Mike Pierce or can we have somebody else? Well, Mike made the suggestion that somebody from his firm would solve the, serve the same purpose. So it's possible that instead of Mike being at our meetings, we may have a partner or somebody from his firm there. So, so that's things to be considered as well. But the board's gonna make this decision. As far as money's concerned, they're gonna make that decision as well because we could, we could say, well, we really don't want anybody spending the money, but the board will then take that under advisement and then they're gonna vote accordingly.
The board has the final decision.
Right.
Board of Commissioners.
Yep.
But I, I think that, uh, the continuity, if Mike was available, would be the ideal situation. My personal opinion, yeah.
Well, that's up to the Board of Commissioners. They, they appoint the attorney for us. So, um, I guess we could have some input on that. But outside of that, they're the ones, they appoint the attorney for us. So it could be Mike, it could be one of his partners, it could be somebody else, it's up to them.
Right.
So, um, the Commissioners are meeting, um, shortly. I, I guess, uh, I guess we're saying George can convey our, our agreement to them, right?
Yep.
Absolutely, I'll relay it during the meeting today.
Okay, any other questions?
So are we?
All right.
We're, we're, we're all in favor of it then, there's nobody with reservations?
I don't have any.
All right, we're good.
I, I, I honestly think it's an unnecessary expense, but I, I will defer to the wisdom of the rest of the, uh, Commission.
So who, who is actually incurring this unnecessary expense?
Taxpayers. One way or another.
George explained that it's...
I thought that was gonna be passed on to the, to those who are presenting their cases. Uh, but if that's something passed, passed on to the taxpayers, then I have a problem with that as well.
So we, uh, so for any application that comes in for subdivision land development that would go in front of the board, we collect an escrow, uh, and the developer has to sign an agreement that they'll be paying, uh, any and all fees associated with this for professional reviews. So the, uh, just like when the stenographer's there, that cost gets passed along. Um, you know, this would be the similar thing, uh, the lawyer, the engineer, fees, anything associated with their plan. So all those reviews are paid for by the developer. So just as a side note, if you ever speak to a developer and they're coming in for a plan, use by right, plan by right, following all the rules, it's through with a very cheap, effective, uh, review. So if someone comes in with a plan that needs all the regulations, everything on the first go, it's a very inexpensive way to do this. Just as a note.
Well, like I said, I'm okay with it as long as it's not passed on, uh, to, uh, um, the, the citizens of the township, so. Uh, other, otherwise I'm okay with it.
Okay. Okay, now, okey dokey, it's, um, maybe in the format, Mr. Gordiasso has suggested that we do it a live meeting in person, practicing, um, social distancing in the gym. And, uh, does anybody have a question about that? I think that's self-explanatory, kinda.
Um, do, do we all have masks or coverings? Or do we need to just to bring our own or, or?
We have, we have masks at the office.
Yeah, the, 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 the field house will be set up in a manner that allows for meetings to happen while keeping, uh, significant distance between individuals. There'll be, uh, hand sanitizer, there'll be, uh, there'll be masks, there'll be anything that you would need to be able to, uh, feel comfortable. We will also be kind of utilizing a similar format where we will be, uh, shooting out the meetings by television and by Facebook Live, which the television will have a better broadcast by next month. Um, so that if people don't feel comfortable coming into the meetings, they could still be present online and still call them with any kind of question they may have.
George, will the general public be advised that they have to wear a mask?
Yeah, so we will have a process in place to be able to log them into the building. Uh, the building rules currently require a mask, so we will continue that requirement.
Okay. Because, you know, they, they, a lot of these weird things are happening at Walmarts and places where, where somebody comes in and wants to say, "I'm not wearing a mask" and blah, blah, blah. Because I personally don't wanna enforce that. I want them to wear a mask, but I don't wanna be the one sitting there arguing with them.
Yeah, no, we, we will have everything set up, um, and, and if, if, you know, you, we post everything with our accommodations. If someone needs an accommodation calls, um, you know, we can actually set up an accommodation for them. If they can set up a camera and a different, uh, TV in a separate room or some, some mechanism of having an accommodation.
All right.
You're talking about accommodations for, for, um, for the public? For public union, right?
Yep. We'll have the day, we'll have the day set up like six feet apart from each other. So you won't be, we'll actually, um, practice social distancing with the, the, um, sorry, with the planning commission, engineer, et cetera.
I'm talking about, uh, any, any, um, uh, citizens who come in, uh, there'll be masks for anyone who comes in.
Right, there'll be masks and also their chairs are gonna be pretty much separated according to the, the regulations.
All right.
Okay, any other questions about that one? Okay, in, um, June, we're gonna have, uh, applications for 800 Galbraith Avenue and Autumnson and Jake's Fireworks. And all the information that you need about them, their final plans or whatever is at the bottom of the page. Any discussion on that or are we all good with that?
You'll be getting more information probably closer to the date, but you pretty much have everything that you need so far. There's only one or two pieces of information you'll be getting again soon.
Okay.
Thanks, Bob, thanks, Bob, for resending that, uh, uh, I got that, uh, I got the package.
Good, I'm glad. You're welcome.
Is there any new information regarding Jake's license to operate? Uh, we had that question outstanding, uh, two months ago or so.
That was the question I asked the lawyer and like I said, he did give me an answer, but he didn't get all the information that I had written down either. And I can tell because of the questions that he sent back and I had to answer. So I don't really know if that was an answer or not. We'll have to ask him what we get there.
So I've got a question about Jake's. Um, have, uh, any of you, uh, have any idea of, um, their, their storage, uh, locations? Uh, or how, how much, um, actual product they'll, they'll be storing or is that even in here? Or, or, I didn't know.
How much? I'm sorry, I just wanna clarify, how much product is to be stored, is that what you're asking?
Yes. And location of, uh, where they would store, uh, uh, store stuff.
I didn't read that they were allowed to store it on the site. Are they?
Well, that's, that's why I'm asking.
Because I don't think they're allowed to...
Isn't the license that they're provided for by the state, doesn't that specify what the restrictions are?
We weren't told anything about that.
The state is the one who actually has to, um, and George and Alex help, you know, make, make sure that, and this is why we would have a lawyer. Um, the state is, um, the one who actually grants the license, not the township. Right, that's the first question I know was asked before. The second, the, the storage, the product to be stored, I don't have an answer. And that's one answer that we can ask. Um, and Alex, I don't, um, on the plan, it has, um, broken down inside, am I correct, some, not all, of where, you know, where things are gonna be, am I correct, Alex?
I really don't have any idea how much, uh, fireworks would be stored in that facility.
No, 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 I know the storage, I'm talking about where, um, the location.
Wait, repeat that now?
You... There is, I, we, we have to figure out, the question was how much product to be stored. We don't know that ans- we don't know that answer. But the other question was the location of storage they're asking about.
I thought they were only allowed to keep enough to sell. They weren't allowed to store extra, that's, that was my, um, understanding.
Uh, just so I can interject and provide a little insight. So, uh, through the subdivision land development process, so it's a company named Jake's Fireworks that are coming in front of you to build a building and they've stated that their intention is to sell fireworks out of the building. All of that stuff as far as like what the requirements that they could have will all be regulated through the building code, uh, through like UCC building code and through their, uh, through their applications in the state. So there's no guarantees that they would even be able to get a application to sell fireworks out of that from the state. Right, there's like either or, either way or indifferent. Right now, I mean, essentially, uh, what they've been doing is been coming in on an annual certificate of occupancy, like a temporary certificate of occupancy and selling out of the small building, uh, with no storage. So, I mean, it's a little bit of putting the cart before the horse. Uh, like I understand, we, we know what it is, so we, we talk about it because it's from Jake's Fireworks. We know that their intention is to sell fireworks out of there. But all that stuff would be regulated through their, they'll come in with more plans to be able to build them. When they build, when they bring in those plans, they're gonna have to prove that they can meet all of the, the legal requirements for building and safety, fire safety for that.
It, it makes no sense to me that they would, uh, would, uh, upgrade a building of that size, uh, to just come in and sell stuff out of there without having, uh, product on hand. So I'd be really interested in knowing the amount of product, uh, that they would allow to have anyone at any given time and where they're gonna store it.
That, the fire, the fire, like what George said, the, the fire and the, you know, and the zone, there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of regulations that have to go through with George. I mean, it's for the fire code and the maintenance code and all that. That's not in the land development, that's more in later on process, am I correct, George?
Yeah, but these are definitely good questions that you could ask the solicitor at the meeting next month and he'd be able to give you advice on what part of the process. I mean, you have to think of it as like, um, recently we had the blah, blah coming in, right? So it would be like the equivalent of asking, um, the developer who's gonna build the building, how much tobacco products, how many tobacco products? Like, I, I get it that it's a, it'll, it'll all be regulated based off of what they're allowed to do, that whole process. So, but definitely ask these questions to the solicitor. He's gonna be there for you and any information he can provide you on where and what he will be able to provide you.
Yeah, I mean, but I, I understand that the comparison, but it's kinda like apples and oranges because you, you keep in mind there's a gas station across the street from this place. And, uh, you know, for some, uh, for a facility to go, to come in with explosives. So I'd like to, to have that question, those questions answered. At least to get my...
If you want, if you wanna give them to me prior to the meeting, we can have our lawyer ready also to actually answer them um, or to ask the other lawyer at the planning commission meeting the questions too.
Yeah, and there are restrictions, um, to how close they can go to, uh, gas stations and things like that. However, that restriction is, uh, that's enforced by the Department of Agriculture in the distribution of our license. So that would be up to the Department of Agriculture to say, "They, I'm not giving them a license because I feel that they don't fit the requirement." The state, the county, the township wouldn't, wouldn't regulate that.
Right, that's the state.
I, 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 I think we're going beyond the scope of what we're supposed to be doing as a planning commission. And, and I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about the... In, in other words, if we needed to know, Greg, every single thing that you're asking about, we would never be able to approve any building. We're, we're approving the building and the site. The, the actual enforcement, this is my understanding now, actual enforcement about everything else associated with that, whether they should have a state license, whether they meet the fire code, whether, whether they're within X number of feet of whoever are all set by regulations that the township and/or the state would have to enforce regardless of whether we approve something or not. The state's not gonna let them operate with excess inventory. The state's not gonna let them operate i- if they can't be that close to a, to a, uh, uh, a gas station. The reality of it is that we'll approve the building, they put it up. We, we agreed the building needs to look like, see what the runoff is, what the stormwater is, what, what the height of the building is, all the things related to the building. And then the actual use of that building is, is promulgated by other stacks that are beyond our control and, and our purview.
Correct. Our is correct.
Mr. Needles, can I tell you what my question was as a solicitor? Um, my question was, it was two parcels, it's now one parcel. One of the parcels was committed for fireworks and the other one was not. And since one number now, is it blanket coverage and is there any liability to the township on the other end if something happens? That was my question. I gave him the deed, the plan, all the information that he needed to go with it, the subdivision date, the subdivision, when it was finalized and everything. What, in the email that I personally sent.
So I can, uh, I can also send him another email tomorrow and discuss with him and try to get a little bit better understanding. Um, it was multiple pro- initially that building with multiple parcels. I think it was actually eight, eight lots that were in that before it was, uh, reversed subdivided.
Yeah, that, yeah, there was two, there was actually two, 1901 and 1919.
Two physical addresses, but it was eight lots. So, yeah, that, so the question would be, does that follow the lots because that's all the address?
Correct.
That's it.
That's right.
I can, I can get to you in a minute.
That's what we asked. Okay.
That, that was my question. If something happens, is the township in any way responsible for that? Because I mean, C and D fireworks is right behind this no-go gas station. So that point's kinda moot, how close it is to the gas station. So, that's the way you gotta look at it. I, I went and pulled the deed for the, for the property. It's still, it has not been reversed subdivided yet, it's still the old deed. It's still, it's the two parcels on the deed that they submitted with, on the plan. And that, that was my question. Is it blanket covered because it's here? Because the building where they wanna sell it off, I was on the, uh, 1916 lot and that was approved. So that was my question.
You want to ask it, how, how close is it, should it be to the railroad tracks?
It's right there. Literally right there.
It's right there.
Boom, right down the, oh my God. Okay, Pam.
The freight line. Well, you, you won't have to worry about those CSX trains, uh, Greg.
Okay, so, so I should give it a thumbs up.
Okay, are we, are we done? And I'm waiting for your answer for our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, um, the public can call in and if they have any, uh, questions or anything, but you can do it by pushing the the asterisk or star key and the number six and please state your name and your address so that we have record of who made the comment.
I'm sorry.
Um, please put out for public comment. I don't, I guess I'm not going to give. Okay, well then let's move on to the next thing and that would be, um, the Heart and Soul and, uh, Lwood Heights presentation.
All right, the Heart and Soul, the, the, the one thing to report on right now is the number of surveys that we've received so far. And Barbara, you can correct me if, I believe you said it was, uh, last count was 139?
Correct.
139 surveys received. Uh, we're looking, I guess, you know, we, we pulled a number out of the air that we thought would be a fair representation of what we were looking for. And we were looking for, and we're still looking for 300 or so. Whether we can get there or not, I don't know. But what we're looking for you guys to do to help because they're an extension of the Planning Commission in a way. They're going to help us as we go forward in, in gathering the information we need to kind of, uh, model our comprehensive plan against what the needs are of the township. Part of that's going to come from some of the information we gather from the Heart and Soul. What we'd like is if you would go on your personal, your personal social media to the extent that you interact with your friends and whatnot and put a little notice about going to our webpage and clicking on the survey and see if you can, an extension, like if, Jim, if you knew four people, that's four more surveys we might be able to get or something like that. Uh, you know, some people are very active on Facebook. I'm not. I don't have Facebook at all, but you know, but, but, you know, other people are on Instagram. Some people just have a, a tree of people that they have with respect to, uh, uh, chain letters and, and emails and, and also your, your local neighbors, you know, the guy that lives across the street or somebody that lives next door to have them, uh, you know, go ahead on there and take the survey. I've been, I guess for the last, what, three or four weeks now, putting uh, information on Nextdoor, which is a, uh, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but it's just, I know, I know Chuck's wife's familiar with it.
Yeah.
Because, because I put a notice on, I put a notice on Nextdoor and
It was great.
Somebody by the name of Louis came back and asked me if you were supporting Marcus Hook. Was the, one of the
Yeah, she told me about that.
We were looking at, uh, one of the businesses we were look, we were supporting, uh, has a food bank, which actually helps our community and helps the, the people in our community. So, uh, you know, the primary purpose of Heart and Soul was Upper Chi Chester Township, not Upper Chi Chester School District. But it's for the businesses and for the residents of Upper Chi and, and we did reference a, uh, Methodist church in Hook that has a food bank that helps out our residents. So we wanted to acknowledge their assistance for, for doing that. That was a, a darn good deed for them to be able to include us. So, uh, your wife raised that question, I think. Hopefully I gave her the right answer. She, she
Yes, yeah.
Yes, that's good.
She seemed happy. But I've been using that, that, uh, Nextdoor to put out some information. I did it for Delco Alert. I did it for, uh, for, uh, the Heart and Soul and I put the message out three or four times. What I'm suggesting, I suggested this to Barb, uh, George, there are opportunities to get sort of like a business listing of for Nextdoor. I, I'm thinking that that would extend to townships or governments. There's, there's a guy on there, Trooper Jones or something like that. Every time he puts an announcement out there, there's like 1,500 people that, that react to his announcement. So I'm thinking of something official from the township, uh, account of some kind with Nextdoor. You could get your Delco Alert message out on that and that would include, for God's sakes, it would include everybody, you know, Aston, everybody. Who cares who, who are people with Delco Alert? But it would also include possibly, uh, Heart and Soul surveys.
We did, uh, we did look at, uh, Nextdoor a little while back as a possible channel to put out information. The issue we came up with is where the way they divide the towns, we weren't able to get one that was just Upper Chi Chester. It was like a portion of Upper Chi Chester in Bethel, a portion of Upper Chi Chester in Aston. So, uh, we, we were, we were debating whether or not that we would have to have quite a few little groups and we'd be able to reach one beyond the township. But, uh, it's not to say it's all we can't look at. Uh, Andrew Henderson in our office has been doing a lot of new stuff with, uh, with the technology here. He's been the one working on getting all this up and running for us to be able to broadcast this. Uh, he started an email blast, uh, through our recreation department. And actually there'll be a Board of Commissioners recap meeting that's coming out, uh, email that comes out on Monday. Opened up a YouTube page, so I'll get, I'll flow it to him and, uh, have him just to research.
Now, I think it might, you know, maybe not. You know, I know what you're talking about because when I tried to do it, I went down and looked at all those little nuances that you were just speaking about, about the communities. And I tried to break each one down and see, well, is this part of this community in Upper Chi? And it was like 15 of them. You know?
Yep.
It wa, it wasn't easy.
Okay.
Uh, the other thing, Barb, you might want to talk about the training that's coming up.
Oh, the phase three training. The phase three training for, um, our Heart and Soul leadership team is, uh, our next milestone, which is really good. Because that will actually train us to do the verifying, uh, promotion of the values, the seven values, and then now the action steps. And the action steps are the biggest part that we want. I know George and the Commissioners want what is going to come out of this Heart and Soul. So we're actually going to, um, get trained on how to incorporate the, uh, uh, values into action items and then how to figure out what groups of action items we want to prioritize and even get funding. So we're excited about it. Um, and I think we're going to be coming to a Planning Commission meeting probably after the training, um, and give you a presentation. Am I correct? That's probably what we talked about.
And I think, Jim, you were, you were there at the, at the summit and you, you actually worked on one of the value statement tables, I believe, didn't you?
Right.
Yes, I did. Yeah.
Okay. And, and so you guys came up, I don't know which one, specifically one you were on, do you recall?
Um.
Sense of Community or something like that?
Yeah.
That's what it was.
All right. So I, you worked on Sense of Community, came up with some comments and statements about what, what does that mean to people in Upper Chi Chester? And so let's just say that you like a safe environment or something like that. Well, then this phase would say, how do we accomplish that? How do we make one of the highlights, what we do here in Chi Chester, ensure a safe community? And you'd talk about police and you would talk about education and you would talk about groups and you would talk. So you'd come up with a whole litany of ideas of how to make something more safe. This would help us focus down on what we could recommend to the Board of Commissioners or to the township or to the police department, whoever, on how that might be addressed within the community. That's what this phase will do. It'll help us get the action steps to help us make sure that aspect, that value statement has a chance of coming to fruition, being supported. Makes sense?
Yeah, we're doing happy hours too.
Had my mic muted. Um, but, uh, yeah, Chuck, that's, Charles, that's, that's great. And I was, I was, uh, I was talking to Barbara a little bit after that, uh, summit meeting. And, uh, you know, one of the feedbacks we got is, uh, residents don't feel safe after dark at Walmart. And that's, that's something that, um, perhaps would be very actionable um, by, uh, the township reaching out to Walmart and asking them to, uh, maybe elevate the, uh, lighting, um, in the parking lot or, or to have, uh, you know, obvious security guards, uh, after dark.
Right.
Be, be there, uh, in the parking lot, not for people to feel a little better about. So, uh, and I thought the summit was fabulous. I really did. I, I thought they did a wonderful job and
I think they did too.
Yeah, it was great. Uh, I, I, I thought it was really well done. So please tell, tell your, um, you know, your members that, uh, the feedback you got was positive about that.
Yeah, well, I, I, what I've noticed and, you know, I'm representing the board when I'm there as well as being an active participant in all, all these activities. This community, when they get together, actually do work very, very well together in trying to come up with ideas and solutions and things like that. And it seems to be a tremendous amount of, of interaction.
Um, we only had about seven minutes left, so, um, I don't want to cut it short because I know this is really important for everybody because it's really good. But, um, and we can, uh, pick it up again next week. But, um, Pam, do you think we should go on to the next thing real fast?
Um,
About that.
Yeah, I think we should. Um, because we can discuss this at the meeting, the live meeting when we go to it.
Right.
Um, in Lwood Heights. We all saw the presentation. We're all in favor of it. It's gone, um, it's sent to the Board of the Commissioners and Barbara has sent us an update plan, which we should all have by now. So it's going to go back to the BOC for, uh, their approval.
Right. Thank you.
And, um, are there any other business? Okay, um, the next meeting will be June 25th, 2020 at seven in the gym. And, um, I guess, do I have a motion to adjourn for the night? Hello?
You have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Exactly. Exactly.
The Commission meeting is coming up in a couple of minutes.
If anybody needs anything from me, just give me a highlighter, okay? I have no problem. And Alex, you and I can talk later if you want. Thank you.
Everybody stay safe.
Okay. Thanks.
The meeting is over. Bye.
Thank you. I had to say goodbye.
Bye.
Uh, Jim, give me a